Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the September 18th meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. And tonight's decisions will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, September 22nd, 2017, which will be the effective date of your variance. The date a certified copy is recorded in the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, October 8th, 2017. If you commence operations and/or construction during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. First hearing tonight, 17/029, a special exception request from O'Neill for a total garage area of 1,516 square feet to construct a 624-square-feet detached garage at 145 George Washington Trail. Someone here to present that application? Step up to the desk, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant seeks special exception for a total of 1,516 square feet of garage where 892 square feet of garage exist and a maximum of 1,326 square feet is permitted to construct a 624-square-foot detached garage. This office can support the proposed garage provided submitted building plans comply with the height maximum of 15 feet. We also have correspondence from the inland wetlands.
Thank you, Mr. Rosick. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Jennifer O'Neill, 145 George Washington Trail in Wallingford.
Okay, and can you explain your application to us?
We'd like to add a detached two-car garage to our property.
And does the property have any kind of a garage right now?
Yes, it does.
And why? So now you'll have more or less...
We'd like to add more space. We have an extra car that we'd like to put in to storage, and then just actually more room just for stuff in the house.
Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions for the applicant? No questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? Mr. Heine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was taking a look at the plan that you submitted, and it was unclear to me as to where the existing garage is located. I see the paved driveway.
So if you pull into the driveway, right on your right-hand side, there's the car garage on the right.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
So it's like under the house.
Okay. And what are you, what is your plans with the existing garage? Are you going to keep it?
Yes.
All right. My only concern, and it's my concern whenever I see these types of applications, is that I'm always concerned that we're going to have as much garage space as we do house. And so that's why I asked a question about what you plan on doing with the existing, the existing garage. But you answered my question, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak against? Come up to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Nicholas Visione. I live at 157 George Washington Trail. I'm their next-door neighbor.
Could you please speak into the microphone for the...
My name is Nicholas Visione, 157 George Washington Trail.
Thank you.
Next door to them. I have no objection to this garage. I'm familiar, I've been living in next door for 26 years, and that property needs the garage space.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and give it up to the commission for...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rosick?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes. You're all set. Your application has been approved.
Thank you.
Second hearing is for a variance, front yard setback and side yard setback for Christensen at 20 Carr Street. Is anyone here to present that application?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant, application to allow front yard setback of 35.9 feet where 40 feet is required and 39.9 feet exists, and a side yard of 17.7 feet where 20 feet is required and 17.7 feet exist to construct a roof over a front entry, landing, and second story addition. Subject property is legally non-conforming for both front and side yard setbacks. Applicant seeking to maintain existing side yard setback by the addition of a partial second story. Increase in front yard setback necessary to cover existing front entry landing. Proposed front area roof addition dimensions are four by five feet. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosick. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Henry Christensen, 20 Carr Street.
Okay, I want to explain your application to us.
So we're just going to add second floor over half of our house. It's a split level.
Can you bring the microphone for...
So our, our house is a split level. We want to add a second floor to add two bedrooms above our kitchen and living room. So the house was built in 1956 before the zoning regulations. So we're not expanding on the setbacks. We're just going up above the existing part.
So the footprint of the, the house will be the same?
Same.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? No questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Wolfher?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Rosick?
Yes.
Ms. Tada?
Yes.
Chairman Bernie?
Yes. You're all set. Your application has been approved.
Next hearing is 17/31, a variance request for, from Dina Tally for 3,007 square feet area, height of 14 feet, and side yard setback 11.5 feet to construct an accessory building at 10 Sunset Drive.
Mr. Chairman, this application is to allow construction of a 3,007-foot, seven-square-foot accessory building with a height of 14 feet where maximum 300 square foot in area and 10 feet height are allowed. Applicant also seeks variance for side yard setback of 11 and a half feet where 20 feet is required to locate said accessory building. Application is result of an inquiry regarding possible zoning violation received 7/5/17, subsequent site visit 7/7/17, with building official confirmed zoning violation and building violations for unpermitted activity. Building foundation framework with some plumbing erected as accessory structure observed. Notice of zoning violation as well as stop work order were issued. Zoning regulations define a building as "any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls or intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or materials." Any other structure more than eight feet high shall be considered as a building, including a fence or a wall but excluding a public utility pole or flagpole. For the purposes of these regulations, there shall be no differential between permanent and temporary buildings. All buildings shall comply with the requirements in these regulations. This office cannot support the application. Applicants claims that zoning regulations do not cover structures such as garden cover per definition. Furthermore, there is question as to the purpose of any covered garden of this size being limited to private use and personal consumption. We have correspondence from the inland wetlands. Also, there's correspondence from the Justin Rosetti from the Building Department to Ms. Lucia Dina Tally, and also to Lucia Dina Tally from Amy Torrey, zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you, Mr. Rosick. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Would you, uh...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Point of order, we have a report from the Planning and Zoning Commission to submit to the record.
Yes, also there's a letter from Casey, also, to put in the record.
You say your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. To my right is Mario Dina Tally, who is the husband of the owner and applicant, and to my left is Vincenzo Dina Tally, who will participate in the presentation this evening. The property, as you know, is an L-shaped piece of land, about twice the lot area of the minimum 18,000 square foot required in the R-18 zone. It is developed with a single-family home occupied by the owner, applicant. Approximately four years ago, the applicant's husband, Mario, to my right, began working on his personal fig tree garden with the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station. It's a group out of, for the state of Connecticut. A group that was founded in 1875. They took great interest in his personal fig tree collection, a collection of over 100 varieties of trees that have been collected over a period of many, many years. This fig tree collection does not violate your zoning regulations since gardening is permitted and the growing of crops per Section 4.1 F4. I'd like to offer as a exhibit, Mr. Chairman, a letter from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station explaining the good work that's being done at this site. Now, as that's being presented, hopefully you have a chance to take a look at it, our request this evening is, in an effort to, the background, the genesis of why we're here, in an effort to protect the fig tree collection against animals, bees, birds, that were not only compromising the integrity of the collection, but effectively ravaging the continued growth of several of the fig varieties, Mr. Dina Tally decided to erect a cover over this area. The initial plan was to cover the area with netting, holding that netting aloft with some poles. This did not provide the full protection that was sought against the bees and other insects, and so a more permanent-looking plastic structure was substituted. It has worked effectively. Now, on July 7, 2017, the town zoning enforcement officer, as your record points out, sent my client a letter indicating that a complaint had been brought to her attention, that the fig tree covering was not perhaps compliant with your zoning requirements. And based on her observation, this cover did not comply with Section 6.2B regarding the location of accessory buildings in the residential district. Now, you have a copy of that letter. It's part of your record. The letter is dated, again, July 7th, and I believe the reference in that letter is, is not accurate. It's not fatal, certainly, but it, it references 6.2B in that letter. And of course, 6.2B talks in your regulations about accessory buildings in non-residential districts. And of course, this is a residential district. This is R-18. I can only assume that the letter intended to refer to Section 6.2A2, and that's the section that talks about accessory buildings in residential districts. In that section, 6.2A2, it talks about detached accessory buildings which are customarily accessory to a single-family residence. Their, the location issues are set forth in that section, may not exceed 300 square feet of gross floor area, shall not exceed 10 feet in height, and shall not be used for human habitation or housing of animals or fowl, except through other specific provisions for stables and other sorts of operations. But that section specifically talks about detached accessory buildings. At first, we were not convinced that the fig tree garden cover constituted an accessory structure or building which would be subject to that provision. You do have comments from your staff that indicate that it is their opinion that this cover is a structure and therefore falls within the requirements of 6.2A, because this is a residential district, it would be an accessory building. And so as we looked at the regulations, I spoke with my client and with her husband, and we came to the understanding that in order to reduce the requests that we have this evening, in order not to need the variance for the size of the building or for the height of the building, that we would attach this building to the main dwelling. Because again, your regulations very specifically say that accessory buildings in residential districts for other detached accessory buildings, that they are the ones that are limited in terms of size or height. And so we will move forward and attach it, annex it to the existing dwelling, which we can do, and we're going to ask this board if they would be kind enough to table the two variance requests that relate to the request for a variance of the size of the structure and the height of the structure. Because it's our opinion that over a period of, a short period of time, this structure will be attached. And once it's attached to the existing building, this section, 6.2A2, does not apply to the structure. Again, it only applies to detached buildings. If it's attached, there are other provisions, which I'll get to in a minute, but that section, if you have your regulations with you, you'll see, and I could certainly offer you that as an exhibit, Mr. Chairman, your regulations clearly point out that this needs to be a detached accessory building to have those limitations of size and height. That's 6.2A2. And perhaps we should offer that, Vincenzo. And again, it's an intent on the part of the Dina Tallies not to stump their nose at the regulations, but rather to try to find a way to comply. Because the effort is to bring it into compliance and not come to the board and ask for what is a significant variance from a 300-square-foot maximum to a 3,000-square-foot garden cover, building, structure, whatever you want to call it. But as long as it's attached, it doesn't fall under that particular section. Instead, as you read 6.2A, it says under four, "Any garage or accessory building made part of the main building shall comply with the yard requirements of the main building." And that's where we're here tonight on the third application. Because the yard requirements in the R-18 zone is a 20-foot side yard requirement. This building is about 11 and a half feet off of the side yard at its closest point. And, you know, in terms of trying to ascertain what is, you know, what is the purpose of that requirement, and why in fact just a space above that, detached garages and accessory buildings located in the rear yard can be no less than five feet from any side yard. So if this was a garage built in the rear yard, it could be five feet from a property line. And you'd have a garage with its noise and its emissions, and that's okay. But this innocuous garden that is 11 and a half feet from the property line, somehow that seems to be violative of the spirit of your regulations. That doesn't seem quite consistent. I might also add that it is not consistent with the development in this neighborhood. We were able to obtain a map of the neighborhood, and we're going to offer that as an exhibit, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And there are dots on this map, and the dots reflect the fact that out of the many homes in this beautiful neighborhood, there are 44 homes, 44 of them, that have either their house or accessory structures that are less than 20 feet from the property lines. When this area was built, that apparently was either the rules or the regulations, but I'm going to offer this, Mr. Chairman, as an exhibit to show that what has been done by the Dina Tallies is consistent with the development of 44 additional or other houses in the neighborhood, so I'll offer that as an exhibit. And why is that important? It's important because you're looking for the granting of a variance that does not change the comprehensive plan of zoning. You don't want it to change the quality of the neighborhood. And I wanted to provide you with some evidence that shows that there are homes throughout this development where they already have either the building itself or an accessory building or garage that is far less than 11 and a half feet from their property line. So this is consistent with the development of the neighborhood. It's, it's the position of the applicant, Mr. Chairman, that the side yard variance will not cause any negative impact on the comprehensive plan of zoning in this area. It certainly doesn't have the impact that the town water tower has on the neighborhood which is immediately adjacent to this location. So we're going to offer some pictures just to show you the water tower as compared to this particular site. Also, Mr. Chairman, as you're looking at, at those pictures, we have obtained and want to offer again as an exhibit letters of support from many of the area, many of the owners in the vicinity of this particular site. We have a letter, Mr. Chairman, and they all are letters of support, supporting the application filed here by Mrs. Dina Tally at 10 Sunset Drive. We've got the property owners at 7 Sunset Drive have signed a letter. We're going to offer that as an exhibit. At 8 Sunset Drive. At 9 Sunset Drive, we're, you know, we're 10. At 11 Sunset Drive. At 14 Sunset Drive. And at 15 Sunset Drive, 19 Sunset Drive, and 14 Scully Drive. But at least we have, again, a very large number of letters of support, which we'll offer as an exhibit, Mr. Chairman, people who think that this actually provides a benefit to the neighborhood. You know, in the, in the staff comments, one of the, one of the issues I think that was raised by Amy was whether or not a building this size would, would really be someone's private collection, or is there maybe something, you know, more to it? Is this a farm stand? Is it something where he's, you know, a greenhouse? Is he cultivating and selling figs? And so we brought Mr. Dina Tally up to explain that this is his passion. This is something he's developed over many, many years. He's gone to Italy back and forth and found different fig trees, different varieties. I've had the pleasure of tasting some of them. And I can tell you that there, he can represent that, he's here to speak for himself, but there has, there's nothing that's sold there. This is not a retailer, commercial operation. This is his garden, and this is what is his passion. And that's why when we talked about annexing this structure to his main dwelling so that it could be attached and not subject to these regulations, I mean, that's a big step, but we want to do that in order to comply with your regulations and come to you, not looking for something that might have been difficult for this board to consider, but to do something that is more consistent with the two variances you just granted, for example, where there was, you know, an accursedion on the, on a side yard. And again, should there be any objections from neighbors, we're prepared to propose, you know, any sort of trees or landscaping to provide any buffer that might be considered or desired by, by any reasonable request. Because we think, again, this is something that has been Mr. Dina Tally's passion, never intended it to come to this level, to be here. We're trying to do everything we can to make this as compliant as possible, and that's why we're here at this point, simply seeking to allow the encroachment of 11 and a half feet into that side yard. Again, more than double the side yard that is required for a garage or other accessory structures in a rear yard. This building, as you see from the map that we submitted with our application, it is, or the structure, whatever the town is calling it, it is partially in the rear yard. It is not fully in the rear yard, as Amy has pointed out to me. So those regulations, I'm told, do not apply. Well, when you read your regulations, again, it says that any, a detached garage can be five feet from the side or rear lot line. I mean, to me, it just, it doesn't seem to make much sense that you can have your garage five feet from the lot line, and yet someone's garden, because he put a cover on it, that now it can't be 11 and a half feet from the, from the lot line. It seems to be somewhat inconsistent. So basically, the fig tree collection is a, we believe is a positive feature for the neighborhood. It certainly is a positive feature for the Dina Tallies. It is his passion. It is consistent with the development, as the map establishes, with the development in the neighborhood over the years. And I think it can only be viewed, if you read the letter from the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, as a big positive for the town of Wallingford. Thank you.
Is the structure going to be covered in plastic or...
I think when Mr. Dina Tally answer that, I think he can give you some direction.
It's just, that's the only thing that's left, plastic to be on there. The structure's up, the cover is up, and we hadn't put the plastic on yet. And since this came up, we decided not to aggravate anybody. We stopped at that point. And so it's, basically, everything is done but the plastic, and that is the intention. I tried before to cover like, the attorney, I think I said that, with netting. The biggest problem with the netting was birds get stuck in it. So after a couple of days, I removed it immediately because it just was not the right thing to do. Birds would get trapped in there, and I got them out as soon as possible, but they would... So the intent was to go with plastic, and I needed something more structured to hold the plastic up.
Does, do the fig trees need to be protected from harsh weather during the winter?
They do, but I've had them in a, in a sort of a bond that I have in the next lot, and I've been protecting it that way with the plastic, but also out, not to, to protect them for the winter.
Okay, so the building will look more or less like those greenhouses that, I can't, Jeremiah has on Barnes Road?
Well, it's, it would be similar to that.
Smaller, but...
Smaller, yeah, but it's similar to that. And...
Can you indicate that you're not selling anything from that?
Right. I do, Jeremiah obviously sells. I do not sell. I never sold a fig tree or figs from my collection.
No, I wasn't even questioning that. I just was making the comparison between what the building...
Yes. And by the way, I've talked to some of those Jeremiah and Beaumont, their buildings are not considered structural building, and basically they're the same thing. So theirs are not considered structural and not, not even a permit is required for them. I understand, you know, so...
Does any member of the commission have any questions? Does any member of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Hein?
I do have some questions. You're asking that we table the application for the size and height variances?
That's correct.
And what is the purpose behind tabling them? So if you're going to attach them, it seems to me that there would be, that may avoid the need for those variances. So I guess my question is, why are you asking to table them as opposed to just withdraw?
Because it's my opinion that attaching them very clearly takes that structure away from those particular regulations. But that's my opinion. That's not necessarily the town's. So I was just trying to make certain that, for some reason, if they disagreed, I don't think so, because I can't, I mean, when you're an attorney, you try to figure out both sides, you know, of the issue. And I can't think of a reason why it would be considered detached if it's attached. But, so my suspicions are that should that, should we come to an accord that the recognition is that it's attached, I'd be withdrawing those two other appeals.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear on that.
Very fair.
And then I guess that then begs the question, Amy, has the, was the department aware of this proposal before? And has the department had an opportunity to draw any position or come to a position on that proposal?
The application before us is for a detached building. If the applicant would like to apply for an attached building, these plans and the submitted application do not match.
Okay.
We cannot vote on a variance for something we don't have plans or submitted application on. We are voting, or not voting, or withdrawing, or submitting as it was submitted.
Okay.
I might, that's not,
Sure, go ahead.
That's not what I am asking. If the building is attached, and we draw it as attached and submit it as attached, we're not here. I'll be withdrawing those two appeals. And if this board thinks you're better served by having us withdraw them this evening, I'm fine with that, because I was just trying to make certain, actually frankly, give the town an opportunity to take a look at it before, you know, before withdrawing. But to me, there's no doubt about the fact that if if I withdraw the appeal as to the height and the size, that the only thing before you is a plan that shows a structure that is 11.5 feet away from a front side yard, from a side yard. And you would have the ability to act on that this evening.
I only raise those questions because it's sort of hard to decide on the issue without seeing what the ultimate plan would be if it was attached. But that being said, what is the what is the hardship that you're claiming with respect to the side yard setback?
I think it's the same that it's the hardship that you've approved again this evening, which basically, even though it wasn't necessarily stated in the motion, I'm assuming that what it was is the fact that it's consistent with the development of the neighborhood. I mean, that's why we're offering you that exhibit that shows forty-four of the houses have structures that are closer than the 20-foot side yard. I think the other part of the argument is that the regulations, when you look at 6.2A, and you look at the section about the distance that a structure in a rear yard has to be from a side yard, it says it can be up to no less than five feet. And again, Amy takes a position, I understand, that it must be located entirely in the rear yard. I don't see the word entirely in your regulations. It says it must be located in the rear yard. Well, a portion of this building, this structure, is located in the rear yard. So I think that there's certainly enough of ambiguity in that language that provides the hardship that this board can act on. We've said that, you know, our position is that a portion, and well, now, it's not all of the structure is in the rear yard, but a portion of it is. You can look at the map that we've submitted. So between that, the fact that they've, you've, well, someone's approved the incursions at forty-four different locations within this subdivision or this neighborhood. And I think also the fact that, you know, these regulations permit a garage within five feet of the side yard setback. And I guess the question is begged, is a garden cover more intrusive than a garage? And I think it's innocuous. I think the garden is innocuous. I don't think Mr. Deanatali makes too much noise, and I don't think there's any fumes coming from it, so.
Yeah, and I understand that argument, and I understand that that, you know, there may be a an issue in our current regulations. However, we're stuck with them. I mean, they are what they are.
Yeah, they don't say entirely. I agree with you. I agree 100%.
And so that, we as a ZBA, we're kind of stuck with what we have.
Understood.
The the other thing I wanted to ask you is that you have submitted that map showing the development in that neighborhood and various homes that have, I believe you pointed out homes with structures that are within 11.5 feet of the property line. Is that what that meant?
I think you said they were less than 20 feet. They were within the side yard.
Okay. And is that a valid consideration for us on a variance application?
I think it is, because again, when you look at a variance, one of the things that you, at least, I'm not trying to be presumptuous, but I think one of the things that any ZBA looks at is to make sure that if they grant a variance, again, we're here to seek relief. If you grant a variance, you don't want it to negatively impact on your comprehensive plan of zoning. So you're looking, you're looking not only to the individual application that's before you, which is most important, but also you want to look at it in a comprehensive scheme. How is it affecting the overall plan? And I guess, you know, what we wanted to provide evidence to you was that if you thought, well, this is like the other two applications, it's pretty straightforward. They're eleven and a half feet back, they're not five feet back. It's not an unfair distance. The use is innocuous. It's not going to create noise or consternation. I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable that this is also consistent with the type of development that you're seeing in there. Because if every house had complied but this one, that might have given me pause, sitting in your shoes. Or in your seat.
All right, I don't think I have any further questions at this time, and I appreciate your answers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question about the eleven and a half feet. Is there a topographical issue preventing you from possibly moving the garden back towards the rear of the property so that you would be within the 20-foot setback?
Well, I think we, you know, we sit upgrade from the property certainly in front of us. Would it be impossible? No. Is it problematic? Yeah, I mean, it's difficult. I think the distance was kind of, it was, it wasn't as if Mr. Deanatali said, "I want to build something that encroaches on the side yard." It is where it is. And so the intent was for Mr. Deanatali was to have something that was relatively close to his home. Because even though we're about the same age, he says it takes a little while to get out there and take care of the fig trees. So I suppose it could be. But our sense was, we wanted to provide you with enough evidence that made you comfortable that granting it would not somehow negatively impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, because I did drive by, and I noticed that it seems like there's a steep hill in the back. So I was wondering if?
That presents a problem in terms of the overall location, sure.
Okay. And then the other point that you brought up about the definition of the rear yard, I know it's kind of an L-shaped lot, which I think, you know, makes the rear yard a little bit harder to define as opposed to the side yard. So can you just explain a little bit more what you were referring to there? With it being partially in the rear yard?
3 talks about the fact that "an accessory building located in the rear yard shall be no less than five feet from the side or rear lot line." And so what I was suggesting was that if this was entirely, according, I think, Amy, if this was entirely within the rear yard, that being entirely behind the existing building, that it would be subject to that, and I don't want to speak first, she's here, that it would be subject to a five-foot minimum setback requirement. And so my point is that the regulation, when it talks about rear yards, it talks about the area behind the primary building. And I think the L shape does sort of add an unusual feature to it, because as you look at it, we are partially behind it, if you draw a straight line along the back of the residential building. And when I look at your regulation, it talks about the fact that any accessory building located in the rear yard, well, we are. We're partially in the rear yard. Are we all in the rear yard? No. That was the argument.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. Counselor, either you or Mr. Deanatali, if you could answer these questions. Up till now, Mr. Deanatali has been raising fig trees or raising this product up till now? And before your intentions of building this new building, where were your figs stored, or where was this being cultivated?
They were in the same place. As a matter of fact, that picture you see there with the tank, you see a long strip? That's before anything was, every covering was built. It's the same identical place. And one of the reasons I had to be there, some of the trees are in ground and covered over the winter. So it had been there for, some of those have been there for five years. It would, if I was to move those trees, it would throw away the four or five years that I worked on them.
About how large was, how big was the square footage of the unit that you had there?
As large as the square, the unit of the garden?
How big was?
The garden was just as big as it is now. Probably even?
But it didn't have a cover on it, or it had?
No.
You didn't have a large?
No, I tried different things like netting, but that didn't work. My biggest problem, animals, all the animals in town have figured out the figs stay split. So have the deer, raccoons, and birds. And every squirrel's eating them and kind of throws everything off. And that's why I went through the expense trying to cover them in the best way possible that I taught.
Just to add to his response, the concrete that was installed was specifically to block the animals from entering the garden. And he's done that similarly in the garden that I have in my home, where you just go a little bit deeper with the concrete so they don't burrow underneath.
Must have been a big project for that cement truck to get in that backyard there, that's for sure, right?
Yeah.
Unbelievable. Counselor, staying with your question about the side yard variance, where was I going with this? I got here. How much of that building do you think was, or is currently in the rear yard? You can see it from the road, but how, the percentage of the total building, how much you think is?
About half of it, I would think.
Half of it?
Half of it is probably in the rear yard.
Would be considered a rear yard?
Yes, I would think if it's in back of the house.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chairman, to the staff. Amy, having said that and having the question answered, was the stop work order placed on the operation due to the fact that it was, it had the concrete floor? And what what reasons did the building inspector say stop it?
A full foundation had been poured, and there was evidence of plumbing, and there had been no building permit pulled for the foundation, or any footings, for any plumbing permits. That's why the stop work order was, from his position, beyond that, you'll need to speak with the building official. But the stop work order was issued because no permits were pulled for the activity there.
And is Amy's answers to my question, are they true, is to what is on the site now? The foundation and plumbing and everything else?
But like my son said, what we referred to foundation here was never intended as a foundation. The structure, this cover does not require a foundation. The concrete wall was basically to stop animals from infiltrating into the garden. So you could call it a foundation, but it's, for that structure that I have there, a foundation is not needed. That same structure could have went up without a foundation, but the animals would have got in from underneath. I have similar walls where I protect my tomatoes and stuff the same way, with a three-foot fence. That's not a foundation. This somehow, it looks like a foundation, so. But it was never intended to be a foundation. And the water, simply, I need water for the fig trees. And I didn't want to cross over the hose so that, put a pipe on the ground that comes into the
From your house?
From my house.
There's no bathroom facilities in this garden?
No.
This is just purely for water?
Mr. Chairman, staff, again, the question. On this application, we're going to be voting on three different variances here and what have you. It's either/or denied by each one, yes or no on each one. Can we approve one and not the other?
If you're considering this setback alone, which is my understanding that the applicant would like to proceed with, you have to do it pertinent to this application. You are making that decision. That variance applies to the project. So if we are changing it, that variance will not hold. So I would recommend perhaps tabling all of them if you'd like to consider alternate or modified plans.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rosen.
I'm pretty lenient when people come in front of us. And I would prefer to see your alternate plan. I have some reservations about what went on. Because I'm afraid if things get out of hand in town, they're always going to look back at, will you let this one and that one? So if you have an alternate plan that you think is going to work, I personally would prefer you come forward with it. That would make it easier on me to make a decision. I understand what you're trying to gain here. Like I said, I'm pretty lenient. I believe that our properties that we pay taxes on, we work hard for, we should be able to do what we want with them. But that being said, we do have rules and regulations. And I would, myself, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm just speaking for myself, would prefer if you have a different angle that you're going to try. I would be interested in seeing it. And then I could easily make it my vote a little bit easier. Because I do agree and disagree with your side yard, rear yard. I'm looking at it, to me, I would, if that was my house, I would say it was, although they're saying it's a side yard, I would almost call it my rear yard. But I understand where the planning office is coming from, and that's where I stand, and I would appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned before that you would be okay with a landscape buffer if the neighbors wanted that. Would you be okay if that were a condition of approval of the setback? That an appropriate landscape buffer be provided by the owner of the property after consulting with the adjacent neighbors? Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
As a condition?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Does anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone like to speak against the application? Come up to the microphone, please, and state your name. Come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. My name is Daniel Capretis. My wife here is Maureen Capretis. We live at 12 Sunset Drive. We are neighbors to Mario Dean Atali. We do not want this structure to go forward. It is in violation of the planning and zoning regulations and in with the intent of the neighborhood. We also believe that we at 10 Sunset Drive are the ones who are experiencing the hardship due to this structure being built. I have for you a written statement that I would like to give a copy to you of, and a couple of black and white pictures that had been taken from our house of this structure, if I may.
Want to bring them up?
Come forward.
Okay, so, the first picture is from our kitchen window, which is a casement-type window, and you can see the steps for our small deck in the backyard. And as you look out from our kitchen window, you can clearly see that this monstrous structure is basically the view you will have for an entire backyard. And it's looming as it rises up with the elevation. And although it may not be obvious from a drive-by, Mr. Dean Atali's lot is quite level from our lot on back. And he could have placed this structure far, far away from our property line if he so chose to do so. I also show you here on the bottom picture, this is a picture from our slider in our family room, so it looks again out over at the backyard. And, and you can see that this structure, rather than being behind his house, is essentially behind my house and behind my backyard. It's really in my backyard then rather than his, if you could look at it from a visual point of view. So, with all due respect, please, there's just me and my wife here, and apparently it's just us that we're trying to protect here. We have nobody standing on our behalf. And I don't understand how, we're clearly, Mr. Dean Atali sought to circumvent the zoning regulations by not even trying to get a permit in the first place. And I have this in my statement here that I gave to the center of the commission. I don't see how you can go forward not protecting me and my wife by granting him a variance of any sort. 3,000 square feet of greenhouse in the back, in my backyard, it is totally inconsistent with the residential neighborhood. And I have gone online and looked at suppliers for this. In the entire Northeast, there's like two or three people or OEMs that are capable of providing this kind of structure. He had every tent of making this a permanent structure, which is going to be covered over in high-density plastic so that it can withstand winds, snowstorms, and everything. It is a building. It is not a covering, like my next-door neighbor on 14 Sunset Drive has a very modest covering of netting over a few vines. This is crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, how are we going to vote on this?
You have three variances in front of you, three separate votes. Again, I will stress, it is this submitted plan that you're voting on. You're voting on this detached accessory building. And as was stated earlier, accessory buildings, temporary or permanent, are considered the same as far as zoning goes. So covering, tent, plastic, building, they're all buildings, and they need to subscribe to zoning. But you have three separate votes to make unless they would request a tabling pertinent to this submission. So we're...
If we vote on it like that, where does the applicant stand by attaching this to the house?
If the applicant would like to attach this to the house, then they would submit an attached plan, a modified plan. This is not an attached building that they've submitted. They've submitted what exists right now, which is a detached building. That's what you're acting on.
Right. And if, if we deny the application as it is, does he need to wait six months to...
Unless he, he has the board's approval, and the application is significantly different than it is now, he can, they may return upon a denial. But you're voting on this application for three separate variances, or tabling again at the request of the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have an adversion of tabling. I think it's been a fair request from the board to take a look at the plan with this particular accessory structure attached as opposed to detached. It's a month, it's a little, you know, it gets closer to wintertime, but, you know, I've expressed to my client that that's a possibility. I understand where you're coming from. And I have no problem requesting that this public hearing remain continued, open until the next meeting, and we'll come back with our plan that will show that, that annexation of this structure to the existing dwelling. And hopefully we'll give this board a better view as to what it is that we're requesting.
I think that sounds like a good idea. I don't know about the rest of the commission. Do I hear a motion to...
Before then, Mr. Chairman, through staff, Amy, is that permissible as well, what their, what their request is? We're asking them if they want to come back next month with a...
If that was, if that's the applicant would like to...
Revised...
To postpone and submit revisions or modifications, otherwise you are acting on this application as is, and any granting of a variance will be only pertinent to this detached. You cannot grant a variance for something that they may do differently later. It's pertinent to this project, so.
Is that some...
You may continue, you may continue this...
Is that something that is your insight on this, that you could come back next month and, and show something that could be a little different, substantial, as they say?
Yeah.
A little, not a little, but substantial difference than what you have submitted?
Yeah, I think what we, I think what, what I'm gleaning is that this board would like to see this structure and how it's annexed to the existing house. I have no problem. I don't think my client has any problem. I think that makes sense. So we'd come back and show you what, and it would be modified. Again, my suspicions are that once that is done, we'll be withdrawing the request for two of the three variances, and just here for the application on the side yard variance. That would be my expectation.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like that idea. I personally would like to see an updated plan with, with the overall project, so we get a sense as to what's being proposed. It also gives the department, I think, some time to take a position as to whether, I know we all have our ideas of, you know, what the regulations say, but it would also give the department, I think, some time to take a position as to whether attaching the, the structure to the house avoids the need for those other variances. So I, I think that that's probably a better route to go. So I, I would be in favor of tabling everything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to table all three variances sought in application number 17-031 to the next meeting.
Second.
And that is keeping the public hearing open?
Okay, motion to table, Mr. Heine.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Wolfert.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Ruzek.
Yes.
Ms. Tarr.
Yes.
Chairman, Bernie.
Yes, to table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, the minutes, there is in the minutes for the meeting that we guys had up at 2:15. Just for the record, I wasn't in attendance, and it did, it did state somewhere in here, it, I, it did state that...
Excuse me, Joe. Mr. Chairman, could you have them take their discussion outside, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please step out into the hallway and continue your conversations out there? Thank you.
I saw it somewhere.
Sorry, Joe.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, the draft of the Monday, August 28, 2017, meeting up in 3:15 with Janice Small. Just for the record, I wasn't present at that either.
Neither was I. I was in Anchorage, Alaska.
Yeah, you're lucky. Other than that...
I think it was a, it was a good meeting with...
I can't believe, I can't believe you guys didn't miss me. You know, you thought I was there. Yeah.
I think it was a good meeting. I think what came out of that was that Janice Small was going to work with Amy in revising, or at least producing a new draft for us to look at for the special exceptions. And I think making it more clear for us to beforehand know what these special exceptions entail and what have you. And I think it would probably be easier for the applicant to understand as well, to those poor people. They probably asked many questions on it when they did, but I think it was a good meeting. And is there any part two that we discussed on, on that that we're looking for?
We certainly can, if you'd like to have a follow-up. I found it invaluable myself. I thought perhaps you might want to put, except for that, our phantom board members that were and were not there, that might be a, it's a helpful resource to reference back to. And we are looking into that special exception application. There's two schools of thoughts on that, that it, it does mirror already the special permit as we discussed. But I think perhaps some additional information, as was outlined to us, and the criteria you should be considering, you know, if it were written right out of the gate would be helpful. I'll keep you posted on that. But should you want a follow-up, I will certainly set that up. But we did not leave the meeting with a definite, you know, part two, unless it was so beneficial, you know, then we'll set it up.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting workshop dated August 28, 2017, as submitted.
Can we, can we reword that as amended?
Yeah, as amended.
As amended, sure. As amended.
Then I will second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the minutes of the August 21 meeting of the ZBA?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.